My name is Trish Bertrand and I'm the president of Springfield Normal. And I really want to appreciate every single one of you guys who are making out tonight. Excuse me. Dan Beatz, he's going to be here. He's a defense attorney and the head of Missouri Normal. He should be here any minute. And then we've got Dr. Gill, hopefully, at some point. And then, in case you missed it, Tony Hurd is the city police chief in Omaha, Rhode. And he was going to come speak tonight. However, there was a suicide in his community and he cannot leave the investigation to come. So we've asked Peter, who is a ex-Texas state sheriff, to come and talk from a law enforcement point of view. So let me tell you a little about myself and why I do this. My husband has three different spine diseases. Traditional medicines were literally killing him twice. We almost died because his liver stopped working due to the narcotics they were giving him. So we found a natural, non-deadly solution to his problem. We owned a business in Ozark. We were successful. Live in the middle-class, white picket fence dream. And then we finally were able to get his spinal fusion done. And four days after his second spinal fusion, we were swatted in our playground business in Ozark because they had seen the computer repairs story, had seen the pictures on the computer that he'd taken, and they turned him over to the multi-county drug task force. And here we are. I decided, I remember sitting in the jail cell that night. We can't allow any more patients to suffer what we did. And so that's why I do what I do. We're now felon. I don't use cannabis. I haven't used cannabis in nearly 20 years. I was just as guilty in the eyes of the law as he was. That's fine. That's how the law is written. I'll take that punishment. But I also know that we need to do something about making people second-class citizens. We're five years out from our arrest and I still, with my college degree, cannot even find a permanent job. I am still working through a temporary employment agency for work. And it's not that I don't have the qualifications to get jobs because at least three times I've been hired and then they realize that I checked that little felony marks on the application and tell me that they can no longer hire me or keep me employed. We spent the last four years in a pretty, pretty ugly neighborhood where there were shootings, stabbings. You know, I couldn't allow my kids to play outside because of the amount of sexual offenders on the street. We finally were able, well, the violence in the neighborhood finally got to us to the point where we had to go. It was starting to affect us, literally. They, we almost had a home invasion in our home. So we, you know, it took us nearly three weeks of being nearly, not because we didn't have the money or the jobs or all the things that you need to be able to rent a home, but because people will not rent nice homes to people that have cannabis. There's no good in society for that. If we don't allow people to get better and evolve, then the circle of crime continues. So we need to do something different. You guys are interested in joining Springfield Normal? We meet the first Wednesday of every month here in this room at the Library Center from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. I can go ahead and, while we wait, hopefully get Dr. Gill. I can take some questions real quick if anybody has any.
If it's legalized, do you think your record will get expunged on that felony?
Yeah, with the bill that Show Me Cannabis has submitted right now, and we're looking at probably flagging signatures, like spring, early summer, there is an expungement clause with that bill. So we need nonviolent cannabis-related crimes will go away. Okay, it looks like Dr. Gill's on my end.
Can you hear me, Gill?
Yes, I can hear you.
You can go ahead and start with your presentation, sir.
Are you ready for me to start?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, Joe. Well, thanks, sir, for your patience here. It's been a little bit of a complicated process getting ready and getting prepared for this.
Obviously, in Seattle, March Madness isn't about basketball. It's about legislation. Because, as you know, we in Colorado have left the country with medical cannabis and now recreational cannabis, but the laws that they pass are pretty broad and they need to be refined by the legislature, just as in Missouri, January, February, March, when they're all gathering to make the laws. And that's when my friends and my former patients, and I'm licensed to practice out here, have written many medical cannabis organizations for very sick people, they summoned me out here to go to the legislative boards and talk to them and convince them about the specific rules and regulations we need to protect their rights to the medicine that they need. And when I was invited to this tonight, I asked, is this about recreational legalization or is this about medical? And Darrell and Trish said, we, you know, want you to debunk the myths about cannabis. And frankly, folks, that's what I'm doing out here in Seattle also, is debunking the myths. And that's what got me first politically active out here. When my patients came to me and they said, Gill, what do we do about this new DUI provision that says with a certain nanogram percent of blood in your THC in your blood that you have a definition of hair? I looked into that and wanted to make sure we have a reasonable law or at least information dealing with it. When we started talking about legalization, law enforcement started saying, oh, it's highly addictive and it's going to ruin the youth and the youth rates could go up. Yet, I'm not seeing that in other states where there's medical cannabis, haven't taken that. And I wanted to prove at that point, make sure that that was fully aware in the public eyes. Yes, you know, marijuana can be addictive, but if they were going to be bringing that to the topic, to the conversation, I want to be sure that we said, it's not defined addiction and say that it is addicting and probably 10% of the people. 90% of people don't ever get addicted to it. And by the way, most people have never tried cannabis, never go back to it because of the paranoia, bad experience, or the fear of law enforcement retribution or something like that. So for the most part, if we're going to say that marijuana is addictive, let's talk about the type of addiction. First of all, would be physiological and physical addiction, like you are addicted to nicotine, you have physical reaction when you come off of it, like alcohol, you go into the DTs, you have seizures, you can actually die from withdrawal. That's not the type of addiction we see with cannabis. We see psychological addiction, where you feel like you needed to get through the day for a little boost, maybe a little bit more social, and when you come off it, there may be a little dysphoria, pleasant mood, there may be some sleep disturbance as the rhythm rebound occurs, start dreaming more. But generally, it's not, other than that, an addictive medicine. But I also want to always point out to my patients, what is an addiction? An addiction can be a compulsion, where you do the same thing over and over again regardless of there's a need. The best idea or explanation for that would be, give yourself five minutes alone. What would you be doing? Checking yourself up consistently. It's a compulsion. So first of all, an addictive compulsion is continuation despite negative consequences as well. And those things, and you continue it despite the cost. You continue the drug despite the fact that you like the work. You continue it despite that. Those are some essential components of addiction that are absolutely essential. But you know what? You look at it, you know, people addicted to sex and people addicted to shopping. So let's put addiction in perspective. One of the reasons I oppose legalization in Washington State, although I think cannabis ought to be legal for adults 21 and older, one of the reasons that I oppose it is because there wasn't enough funds to go into education of the youth about it. If a state's going to make money, legalize cannabis, then they also need to fund the ability to educate the youth that it can be addictive. Is it a gateway drug? Alcohol's a lot more of a gateway drug, if so, nicotine, the statistics say. And statistically, psychosocial behavior is more of a determination as far as the outcomes when you're addicted to a drug or drug abuse as opposed to exposure to nicotine. Other myths? Does it cause a decrease in IQ? Yes, especially in people under 21, only in 21, and all your tests have proven. That's why we say, it's like a tax cannabis, but make sure no one under 21 gets exposed to it, has allergies, wearing it, no, they're not going to have a treatment available. Those are some of the biggest risks that we have in fighting this uphill battle. My vibe is kind of closed, but let me just summarize and explain that a watershed moment has occurred in medicine over the past five years where the medical utility for cannabis can no longer be denied. It is a miracle drug in multiple sclerosis. It stops seizures that anti-convulsants can't touch. It's a miraculous anti-inflammatory and it's a neuro-inhibitor in Parkinson's disease and some neuro-progressive diseases like that. It interacts in the anti-inflammatory pathway, the same mechanism pathway that Galapentin does. And another thing, you know, I always thought it was stoner rhetoric when people say, oh, it cures cancer, but you know what? The last Hudson apology conference I went to, where we're talking about pathways of all the 100-plus cannabinoids, this guy circled this pathway and he goes, what is that there? It was Greek to us. He says, that's the same pathway that stops cancer. The most recent cancer-interuptive, cancer-living drugs that we have work on the same pathway that cannabis does. So apparently, yeah, there are antidotes, our legitimate fix as well. So I hear there's great talent there and I wish I could be there a part of it. I'll be listening and available to take questions later. We do want to talk a little bit about this DUI thing too, that got me so interested in the local politics here in Seattle about driving under the influence. The important thing to remember is, urine cannabis can hang out for days and the blood can hang out for hours for people to use or use. We want to be sure that my patients, when I'm tear three days after the last time I were exposed to the medicine, so it's like the law has lots to do and that's what I'm doing now, let's get it. So thanks for your patience.
I'd like to introduce Peter Mokki. He is a former Texas state sheriff, deputy sheriff. He also has MS. And you guys, a little bit about law enforcement and the amount of time and energy and tax dollars they use in trying to combat small, minor cannabis crimes, so.
Thank you. Just to jump right in, like she said, I'm a former deputy sheriff out of Spis County, Texas. And a lot of time is, like she was saying, is spent chasing something that everybody's got. It's on the streets and it becomes a racial issue, but it's a street, it's a socio-economic problem. The whites and the blacks, every color, doesn't matter, they're all doing it. The, you know, it finds its way out on the street corners and it's unregulated. If we could regulate this and tax it, we can get it out of this hand more so than it just flowing freely. One good thing to look at is ask yourself or look at the statistics of the Mexican drug cartels flooding marijuana into Colorado. It's non-existent. So, you know, if you make something illegal and you regulate it, or you legalize it and regulate it, you've got a greater control. If we, you know, pulled over somebody that had marijuana, we're tied up for about two hours, arrests, vehicle searches, absent portages, you know, the paperwork involving booking, transporting, you know, if they have to go to the hospital on the way, that takes three, four hours on the street where for a silly little crime like marijuana, now we can't deal with auto thefts, robberies, rapes. And in the end of it, it's something, it's not going to be able to, you're not going to be able to stop. It's like prohibition for alcohol. And alcohol is much more dangerous. Could you imagine if you were trying to buy a bottle of whiskey like you were trying to buy a bag of weed? I mean, you know, but it was back in, back during prohibition, they changed that. You've got a vice that you can't keep people away from. You're fighting a war that's, they're not going to win. And with all that, discretion comes into a huge, huge play. The letter of the law is written by the law, but you can't sit in a room and go over every scenario of everything and make sure you cover it. That's where the gray letter of the law comes in, the shades of gray. That's called discretion. It's a power that's given to police officers. We go out, you know, we deal with people in the worst of times and we have to take on a counseling role. And with that counseling role, we have to make a discretion. Do we want to arrest this person for a joint and now they've got this on the record and they're going to affect their job and now they can't provide for their children? And it's just a, it's just a steamroller effect, damn shitty.
I think you can attest to exactly that.
With the dash cams and the body cams, your discretion is erased. Because if you're not following the law, now you're destroying evidence. And that puts my livelihood, my brother's livelihood, you know, losing their jobs and then having to worry about how to feed their families. So. Yeah, we should, we should change the laws. I'm not saying they're horrible, but the discretion, discretionary factor, you know, if, if you have an officer that even believes in the fact that marijuana should be legal, he's under a sworn oath that he will not destroy evidence and he will bring charges in your answer for court. He's not a judge. So we need to rewrite the laws so that it's, it's not such a, such a horrible thing. It's a plant. I mean, I can grow tomatoes, I can grow marijuana. I have a mess now. And I know that I spent two months in the hospital not being able to walk, rehab medication, and it took a toll on my mind. But when I go to Colorado on Medicaid, I can walk around in my hotel room. I'm a firm believer. I'll turn it back over to Trish.
Last check, Dan was about two minutes away. So if you guys want to ask, right, if you guys want to ask any questions from Peter or myself right now while we wait patiently, I'd be happy to answer any.
Hey, Peter, I'm sorry. You're talking about yourself, you know, and how you feel about it. How do you get to take across the board from the police officers, the sheriff, the deputy parole, everybody you know in law enforcement? How do you, how do you get their take on it?
A lot of them aren't going to give you their take on it. It's a very tight-knit community. So, I mean, it's hard, it's hard to break through when you get anybody to speak out here and make questions. Here we are talking about something, and not me anymore, because I'm no longer a sworn officer. You're talking, you're speaking out against something that you're sworn to enforce. So you're walking a very tight line. That's why most of the officers run in circles. You know, they run with themselves, they go to gyms, their wives come over, and they all kind of run in tightly groups because loose lips, it can be taken wrong. All of a sudden, you're quoted in the paper and now your boss is calling you in. So it's really kind of hard to get their take on it.
Sorry, can't answer back.
Let me tell you a little story. We table, we take the merchandise sometimes and we'll table downtown. And one night, a lady, an older, or I guess a middle-aged lady came up and she was asking this question. And a Springfield police officer sort of happened to walk by. She said, hey, hey, come over here and tell me what you think about this. And he was like, I can't, you know, I'm in uniform, I can't, I can't do that. And she's like, no, really, tell it. He was like, well, let me put it this way. He said, I've never fought, or I've fought with meth heads and I've fought with alcoholics and I've fought with crackheads, but I've never fought with a pothead. I mean, and so, yeah, he's right. They can't, while they're in uniform, they cannot take an opinion one way or the other. But I really think that they, they know. I mean, they're doing it every day. They know that they're wasting their time, so. Do you have a question, Dan?
I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about how marijuana's been going to go down as far as a class D misdemeanor start for January 2017.
I'll have Dan verify everything I have to say, but last, last legislation session, they rewrote, the legislature rewrote the entire crime bill, or the crime book. And there was a lot of legislators pushing to decriminalize entirely the whole state. The best that they could get done was moving it to 10 grams or less first offense, moving it to a class D misdemeanor. And that doesn't take effect until January of 2017. Hopefully by then, we'll have passed a much, much better regulation like alcohol bill in November of 2016, but that's about as far right now as the legislature. Dan's going to fill you in a little more, but there's a couple of bills right now that are really getting some traction in the legislature. There's a medical bill that, in my opinion, is way, way too restrictive. There's, there's a bill that would free Jeff Zinski that's actually been passed out of committee. They just heard an expungement bill. But again, once Dan gets here, he's, that's what he was.
How about he's here?
Where's this late young man? This is Dan Beatzky, he is the head of Missouri Normal and he's a defense lawyer and he's been doing this for about 40 years. So with all.
Well, okay. Where's the other guys? Oh, that's okay. Well, great. Well, I'm certainly honored and very happy to be invited to speak this evening and to speak to all of you. This is a fantastic turnout, so encouraging to see. I think that, you know, if you don't stop me, I'll never stop. So how long do you think I'm going to go here? Will you let me know when time's up? Well, yeah, sure. I mean, I can run on. But I, I am really happy to be able to speak to you at this time. I mean, you've heard me speak before, you've heard me say this, but it really is true and it's more true as time goes by. I've been in this game, as Trish said, for about 40 years, actually, and I can guarantee you, it has never been more fun than it is right now. This is the time to be involved in legalizing marijuana, there's just no doubt about it. And the progress that we've made, you know, not just across the nation, I'm sure all of you know, obviously, that Colorado and Washington and Oregon and Alaska and Washington, DC of all places, you know, have legalized marijuana now. I mean, it was just a week before last that legalization took effect in Alaska and in Washington, DC, and a Republican Congress didn't stop it. I mean, that's just incredible. You know, how is it that these things are happening? I mean, it's just, it's just amazing. It's just, it's just thrilling to be a part of this movement right now. And in Missouri, in Missouri, amazing things have happened and continue to do so, I mean, as we speak. One year ago, right now, in the middle of the 2014 session of the Missouri General Assembly, nobody would have bet, you could have gotten very good odds against the notion that the Missouri General Assembly, much more than two-thirds Republican, and even Democrats are pretty conservative, you know, that the Missouri General Assembly would overwhelmingly pass a law that allows marijuana extract, as they put it, to be given, not just to medical patients with epilepsy, but to babies. You know, I mean, what are the odds of that happening in this dimension? You know, I mean, that's something that might happen in some other, you know, doppelganger world, but not in Missouri, not, it's not going to happen. But my God, at the end of the legislative session, a bill to do exactly that, to give marijuana extracts to babies with epilepsy, passed unanimously in the Missouri Senate. Not a single descending vote. And 90% of the Missouri House of Representatives voted in favor of this. And they didn't just vote for it, they added an emergency clause onto it. They said, this is so urgent that it should go into effect immediately upon the governor's signature. And it did. And it's now legal in that regard to cultivate marijuana in the state of Missouri. Two not-for-profit entities were recently awarded the authorization by the Missouri Department of Agriculture to cultivate hemp legally for the first time since World War II. First time in about 60 years. In other words, it's now, for at least those guys, legal to cultivate hemp in the state of Missouri again. And there's good reason to think it's going to be legal for all of us pretty soon. And I mean, you know, in regard to hemp specifically. The legislature last year passed a half dozen important marijuana law reforms. And that one, you know, I think was perhaps the most incredible, the most amazing, the most groundbreaking. Now, you know, 10 other states passed these so-called CBD laws. And I know that this is a very narrowly focused, you know, little foot in the door, but it is a foot in the door. You know, I feared, and I know some of you feared, that, you know, this is just a, this is just a ruse, a pretext, an excuse to not pass a real medical marijuana law, a broad medical marijuana law that would involve whole, natural, organic, real cannabis and it would allow people with all kinds of injuries and ailments to benefit from it. But this is progress toward that goal. It is not a diversion. It's not a tactic to fight or keep that from happening. You've got to bear in mind that political change is almost always evolutionary. It's very rarely revolutionary. I mean, revolutions happen every few centuries, you know, but the vast majority of political change is, is an evolution by stops and starts, you know, two steps forward and one back sometimes. But we are making those steps forward and they're pretty dramatic steps. So among the other things that passed in the 2014 session of the Missouri General Assembly was a bill that eliminates jail for first offense for most marijuana arrests. I think I can say that, I hadn't thought of putting it that way, but it's literally true. Now, it's narrow too. It's just a little foot in the door, but it is no jail anymore for the first offense possession of small amounts of marijuana. And by small, I mean under 10 grams. That's pretty small. You know, when, and I first thought about that, you know, I say, well, Dan, you know, that's, that's a pretty small percentage of folks. On the other hand, when I started thinking about it, that's most of the marijuana arrests. That's, most people are getting arrested for the first time for marijuana. Most people only get caught with a small amount, under 10 grams typically. You know, highway stops and other kinds of hassles that happen. You know, the great majority of people that are charged with marijuana offenses, of course, we criticize the police for this because it is true that the vast majority of these, oh, what is it, 700,000 or so arrests every year in America are caught possession of small amounts. We've just eliminated jail for that offense. That's a big step in the right direction. Now, that came about as part of a general, broad rewriting, rearrangement really, of the so-called Missouri Criminal Code. You know, and by code, it simply means all the criminal laws of the state of Missouri. And I had the good fortune to get to serve on a committee of the Missouri Bar Association that sponsored, that drafted this legislation. And so I, you know, I'm proud to take a little bit of credit, but not all of it by any means, you know, for getting these marijuana law reforms into this gigantic bill. It was literally the single biggest bill that's ever been filed in the history of the Missouri Legislature, the thousand-page monster bill, because it rearranged so many things. It didn't make a lot of substantive changes. We were only supposed to rearrange the deck chairs on the Titanic, not actually steer away from the iceberg, which is, you know, the horrible incarceration rates in America. But the committee could not resist doing that because it's so obvious it needs to be done. And so the committee, made up of Missouri legislators and their staff and a bunch of prosecutors and, you know, me and a few other defense attorneys as well, got together and, and nobody really argued. In fact, the committee wanted to be no jail for first offense up to 35 grams. But our guys in the legislature had to fight to keep it in there at all. They had to compromise down to 10 grams to keep it in there at all. But again, it's a first step, it's a first step to no jail. And you might think, well, nobody's going to jail anyway for that offense, but they are, I'm sorry to tell you. I practiced throughout the state of Missouri. I practiced in every circuit and almost every county in this state. And I can tell you that there are still today counties in Missouri where you will routinely and always serve five days in jail for first offense possession of any amount of pot. Those counties are Osage, just to the east of Cole County, just to the east of Jefferson City, and Herman, Gaskinake County, just north of the river, right there at that same area. I don't know why these counties have this practice, but they won't give it up. They haven't stopped, they keep on doing it. You know, it's a terrible thing. It will not happen again when this new law goes into effect. Nobody's going to serve five days in jail again for pot possession or paraphernalia possession in those counties or any others in the state of Missouri. Now, that same criminal code revision contains several other good changes. One of them was to reduce substantially the range of punishment for. ounces, there's a lesser range of punishment now. You know, it's, obviously, it's a long way from perfect, but it's real progress in the right direction. The range of punishment for any distribution of more than five grams of marijuana has for decades been from five to 15 years. Under the new criminal code, the max will be 10. You know, it's way too long, of course, but one-third less than it's been for the last several decades. The same criminal code revision also made the same reduction in the sentencing range for cultivation of marijuana. Cultivation, or even the attempt to sprout a single seed in the state of Missouri is a class B felony. Now, that carries a range for first offense of five to 15 years in prison. Now, it's not mandatory, people get probation, of course, but that's the range, and some people, you know, get the maximum, and some people have to serve it. Well, again, that'll be reduced. The penalty for cultivation of, again, I can't remember the maximum, but it's a pretty good number, of marijuana plants is now going to be, the range reduced by one-third. Now, another important change that happened last year relates to a, one of many silly and crazy bills that were passed by Congress. This went back in 1996. Congress passed a federal law that said that if you have ever been convicted of a drug-related felony offense, then you can never receive food stamps for the rest of your days on earth. And of course, nobody wants to need food stamps, and only poor people need food stamps. Nobody wants to be a poor person. But the reality is, the great majority of the people that depend on food stamps are young, single mothers. And, you know, most people would agree, "Yeah, we want to help out young, single mothers and their kids, at least." And so, Congress passes this law, since you've ever had a drug felony, you can never, ever get food stamps again. And, but Congress also adopted a little opt-out provision, a provision that said that the state, if it doesn't want to do that, doesn't have to. All you have to do is vote not to do it. And I think Congress thought, "Nobody will have the guts to vote against a get-tough-on-drugs provision." But over the years, since 1996, 41 other states had done exactly that. You know, it doesn't take a genius to figure out that if we are losing millions of our tax dollars, which go to Washington DC, and don't come back to Missouri, don't come back to Missouri, you know, it's not just the mothers and the kids, it's the grocers, it's the shoemakers, the shoe sellers, the, you know, all of the things that these people consume, all of the businesses, they're being deprived of millions of dollars of tax revenue that's going to other states because we haven't opted out of that stupid law. Well, the point being, of course, that after 18 years of trying, it happened last year. The Missouri Legislature did opt out. We became the 42nd state, you know, not the 50th at least, but, you know, the 42nd state to opt out of that stupid law. And that happened in the same year, all these other changes, the CBD law, the no jail for first offense possession, the reduction of the penalties for sale and cultivation by one-third. All of these things happened in one breathtaking session of the Missouri General Assembly. No crazy new bills passed. None of these crazy get-tougher-on-drugs bills passed. And, you know, thank goodness, for the most part, it's always been, and probably always will be easier to stop a bill from passing than it is to pass a bill in Congress and the legislature, you know, anywhere. And for decades, that's been a good thing, because a lot of really crazy bills have not passed, or have at least gotten moderated somewhat before they passed, because of that fact, if any one senator basically can, if he or she is really determined to stop a bill, can filibuster in and stop that bill. But to pass good bills, that's tough. You know, that's not easy. No one senator can pass a bill, nobody has the power to make a law pass. But I'll tell you, in this session, you know, I thought, "Well, Dan, that must have been a fluke." Forty-three years of going down there and whining and complaining and testifying and lobbying, you know, we've gotten very little passed that was positive, although we did good. We stopped a lot of bad things from passing, kept, you know, things were getting worse. But to see those six really good reforms pass in one single year, I thought, "Man, that was a fluke. We'll never see that again, you know. We'll never see the whole criminal code being revised again for 20 years or so, probably." That was partly the reason that progress could be made in one year. But I can tell you, this year is shaping up to be pretty amazing, and, you know, there's ever reason to believe that this momentum is going to continue. So, what we've got pending right now, and I wish I had a list here of trip sheet, but I can tell you that pending right now, and having been heard recently in committee, is a, I guess I call it a real medical marijuana bill. It's certainly not one I can get real enthusiastic about, but as you might have heard, and I believe it's October 800 in this case, or 830, correct me if anyone knows I'm mistaken.
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred, right? Yeah, yeah. The broader medical marijuana bill that got an early hearing, that got, you know, Montel Williams to come to the legislature and amaze all the media, that bill got an early hearing, and then it got voted out of committee. You know, that was pretty amazing. It's not ideal for, among other reasons, the fact that it doesn't allow patients and caregivers to cultivate any marijuana. You've got to buy it from the government store. And it restricts, in its original form, it restricted those who could even qualify, could even apply to be a medical marijuana distributor, to be at a half a million dollars in cash in the bank. Not just equity, not just your cars and your house, but I mean, a half a million dollars in cash in the bank. Who's writing these laws? Rich people, people who have a half a million dollars in the bank, you know? I mean, damn, it's, you know, it's hard to swallow some of these. But that provision has been reduced. It's now been reduced, at least as I understand it, down to not having to be cash in the bank, at least, you know? And maybe you can join with several other entities, families, individuals, or whatever, pool your resources, and maybe you can, you know, you shouldn't have to. But if that's all we can pass this year, it is progress. It's not like that's going to be the end of it. It's not like we're going to accept that and, you know, never go back to the legislature again. I mean, some people thought CBD last year would be the end of the medical marijuana issue. Nobody thinks that anymore. Everybody recognizes that this fight will go on until we have at least the kind of laws that Colorado has. I think that, you know, that's probably still the best model for other states to follow, and the experience of Colorado thus far has been just amazingly positive, and I think any objective observer has to agree with that. And politicians are addicted to money, to our money. They love to spend our money. And, you know, that's their favorite thing, is to, you know, pass out money. And so, you know, the idea that they could be taking in another 75, 250 million dollars each year that they can dole out, you know, that's a pretty attractive, that's a pretty attractive prospect to legislators. And the reality of that, you know, it ain't just some pie in the sky, ivory tower economist at Harvard says that we can make this much. It's like the state that's just over past Kansas is making and spending that money right now. It's real, you know, it's very real. So, you know, what we're seeing is that some people from, well, some out-of-state interests are spending a lot of money in the Missouri General Assembly, and they're not really team players, and they're not consulting with the movement, and they really aren't at all concerned with what we think necessarily. But, you know, there's kind of a weird evolution going on. And progress, we have to recognize progress when we see it. We have to accept what we can get and then come back for the rest next year. You know, that's the way this works. And so, there's a bill pending, there's a bill pending that would, again, allow a limited number of cultivators, dispensaries, allow retail sales for medical purposes. It's, you know, the medical purposes of limited to are far too narrow, that they can be expanded. And that's been the experience in other states throughout the country, is that the purposes for which cannabis can be used are expanded. I don't know that there's been any restriction. I don't, I can't think of an instance where a state said, "You can use it for cancer, MS, and glaucoma," but then they took away glaucoma. I mean, I don't think that's happened. So, there's ever reason to believe that whatever we win this year will be just the base. That'll be where we start again on next year, you know? I know some people are, I think, discouraged by that fact, you know? "We want to win it all and win it now." You know, and I don't blame anybody for feeling that way. But the reality is, it's just not the way it works, you know? We will win it. We won't win overnight, quite, but, you know, it's getting closer to that. And we won't win everything we want the first time. And we're going to have to accept that some of these bills contain some pretty stupid or, you know, evil, even provisions sometimes. But it is progress, and every time we move closer to our ultimate goal, it is a good thing. You know, nobody is selling out, nobody is going to accept just what we get this year and say, "Well, that's it, we're going home, and we're never going to try and get anything better." That's just not going to happen. You know, Thomas Jefferson, of course, said that the price of liberty is eternal vigilance, and even eternal, you know? It's eternal, it's not going to be over. You don't win and then go home and get to say, "We won," and, you know, and think you never have to fight again. You know, it's true, it's true of liberty in general, I think, and it's certainly specifically true of this aspect of liberty, this important part of political reform. There are bills pending, as I mentioned earlier, to allow broad-scale industrial agricultural hemp cultivation to happen again in Missouri. And that bill is moving. That bill is moving out of committee. In fact, last Wednesday, I'm probably going to need some help here, last Wednesday, four bills, four marijuana reform bills, all passed out of committee on the same day. That's unprecedented. What's even more incredible is that each of those committees, in the House and the Senate of the Missouri Legislature, recommended those four marijuana law reform bills for passage with only one dissenting vote. And that's just a bizarre coincidence. I don't think there's any, you know, real conspiracy going on. It wasn't the same guy in every committee, but there was one guy in each of these committees where you had, you know, different numbers, but everybody else who was there to vote that day on that committee were voting our way. So, you know, I don't think we need to compromise too much, you know? We don't need to give up on the real goal, and it seems to me that the real goal has always been and always must be that individuals have the right to cultivate their own cannabis. Now, you know, some people argue that the real goal is the tomato model of regulation, which is to say virtually no regulation. And maybe, you know, I mean, there's no harm in asking for everything, but realistically, I think, I hope I'm wrong, but I think that what we're going to have to accept is a form of regulation and taxation, which is somewhat similar to alcohol. I mean, maybe one day, maybe I'm being too conservative, maybe it won't be that far off before we have the tomato model, but we're not going to get that in the next couple of years. And so, in the meantime, Show Me Cannabis, I'm sure all of you know, Show Me Cannabis, you know, is an entity that's been created that is specifically for the purpose of placing legalization on the ballot in Missouri. It is a political action committee. Show Me Cannabis is not like Normal, a democratic, you know, grassroots political reform organization. Show Me Cannabis is created for one single purpose, and that is to place marijuana law reform on the ballot, and in the meantime, to try to influence the course of legislation in Jefferson somewhat. But clearly, our primary and central goal, and Miranda Reynolds has served on the board of Show Me Cannabis for years, and been an officer of Springfield Normal, of course, for years, and our goal is, at this point, our specific, in short-term goal, is to raise the money to do a poll of Missouri voters, and to see specifically among those who are likely voters in November of 2016, what level of support there is for legalization, for taxing and regulating marijuana like alcohol, like Colorado did, where each individual is authorized to cultivate up to a half dozen cannabis plants. I haven't heard of any, you know, horror stories, even silly made-up horror stories about personal cultivation. I haven't heard of anybody that's, I mean, I'm sure it's happened, but I haven't heard of anybody that's burned their house down because they had, you know, lights that they hadn't properly installed or something like that. But that's about the worst harm I can think of anyway that might be connected with home cultivation. There's really no reason that should not be part of every medical bill and every reform bill. And I think I can speak for the Show Me Cannabis Board in saying it will be part of any proposal that we put forward. But here's why, here's an important lesson. It took me at least 20 years to figure out, and, you know, only then, because somebody pointed it out to me, of course, but we win in presidential elections, and we lose in non-presidential elections. And that's not always true. In fact, Oregon and Alaska just proved that's not always true. They managed to win in a non-presidential election year. But they won in the next testing, a November autumn election, when there are congressional elections and statewide elections, and the point is that those campaigns bring people to the polls. It is tempting to believe that we can, you know, just somehow motivate enough people to come out and vote to win our elections, but it doesn't happen. And I think it's, we're bullish, we delude ourselves if we rely on that kind of thinking, but it just doesn't happen. You know, people are pretty much the same everywhere. And after the movement, the nationwide American marijuana law reform movement, after we lost enough elections on non-presidential years, and started seeing that only others in pattern were winning them in the presidential election years, you know, then people have started to take this lesson apart. Now, it's not just because more people vote in presidential elections, it is because the demographics of those people who vote in presidential elections are so dramatically different. And so, who votes every darn dog catcher election that comes along? Well, those people tend to be old, they tend to be conservative, they tend to be probably a little wealthier than average, and they tend to be pretty darn right-wing. That's a broad generalization. It's not, you know, it's not a rule, but it is a valid generalization. So who is it that comes out and votes every four years only? Who is it that only votes when there's a presidential election on the ballot? Well, unfortunately, it's pretty much us. It's not so much me anymore, but it's pretty much the younger folks, the folks who may not be as wealthy, the people who aren't necessarily politically engaged in following every election, obviously, but it's largely the people we need to be there to vote for our election. Now, keep in mind, it's not dopers. It is a harsh reality, but most people don't smoke pot. We only win elections if most people vote for our proposals. We have to persuade a lot of people who don't smoke pot, and probably won't ever do it, that we're not a threat to them, and that we're not somebody who needs to be thrown in jail. And the more we come out, the more we come to public meetings like this and show that the people who want these reforms are not a threat to society, then the more accepting society becomes of doing what we want them to do, stop putting us in prison. And so, it's important to understand that. You know, our goal is not to promote marijuana, and I don't know if there's reporters here tonight, but I hope if there are, when you write about this, you won't say, "A pro-marijuana organization met at the library last night." Because we're not promoting marijuana use. We're not encouraging it, we're not glorifying it, we're not trying to get more people to smoke pot. That is not our goal. You know, in fact, the fewer people smoke pot, the cheaper it's going to get. I'm in favor of nobody smoking pot but me, and that's my initial problem. But seriously, you know, our goal is not to promote marijuana smoking, and we can't let the press pigeonhole us like that. You know, if our opposition is the anti-pot-smoking group, and we're the pro-pot-smoking group, then we don't tend to win hearts and minds, you know? Right out of the chute, we're characterized that way, and we lose that argument. We have to make it clear that what we are is pro-choice, that we believe that people should have the choice, if they're adults and if they use it responsibly, to, I'm not sure if I'm getting the hook here or not.
I want you to tell the people before we go into our question and answer here for a minute. What do they say if they encounter the police?
Nothing.
That's not what you normally say.
No, that's not what they say.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up here, because I do have some little green cards here.
We got some up here at the front table, too.
Good, good. Well, I passed them back anyway. But thanks for asking, because I love to talk about that. I mean, it's important, because I know I've had people come up to me after I've, you know, given this little spiel over the years, and say, "You know, I did what you said to do, and it worked." There's no surefire way to always, you know, beat the system, or not get arrested, or even win your case after you got arrested. I can pretty much guarantee you that the advice on this little green card will, in almost every case, get you a better outcome. What are the most important rights you have when you deal with the police? Well, the United States Supreme Court, back in 1964, was so appalled that the police kept on coming to them and saying, "Well, this guy, he just confessed. He just, you know, we asked him, 'Is that your marijuana?' He said, 'Yep.' And, 'Are you growing it?' 'Yep.'" And, you know, I mean, just people just confess, you know, not about marijuana all the time, of course, but in criminal cases generally. The Supreme Court was skeptical about this. I think the Supreme Court didn't really believe the police were being totally honest about this, not all cases at least, and so, they imposed a rule that some people to this day think is a horrible communist plot. They said the police actually have to tell you your most important fundamental rights when they arrest you, that is to say, after they arrest you. And we see this happen on TV, of course, as if it's routine, and people often come to me and say, "Hey, they didn't read me my rights, so we'll get this thrown out." And the answer is almost always "No," but I say, "By the way, which rights are you talking about?" And they say, "You know, the, you know, right to be silent." "Ah, so you knew you had that right?" "Yeah." "And did you do that?" "No, I told them that's going to be legal any day now, and they should leave me alone," and all kinds of other stuff, you know? Which I guarantee you will be twisted, look even worse and even stupider when they recount it back in their No, I told them that's going to be legal any day now, and they should leave me alone, and all kinds of other stuff, you know, which I guarantee you will be twisted to look even worse and even stupider when they recount it back in their police reports, you know, there's, there's just no reason to talk to the police, you know, how can it be any clearer? You don't have to talk to the police ever. They don't have to warn you about that until after they arrest you, and they don't have to do it then unless they're going to question you about your charges after they arrest you. Well, you know, police didn't take a long time to figure out that, well, then the way this game is played is we ask questions, then we arrest, then we're done asking questions, we don't even need to read the stupid random warning, you know, and, and people just, it goes in one ear and out the other. People, they know they have the right to be silent, but somehow they guess it's not mandatory, so hell yes, I'm going to talk. Well, the second leg of that random warning is, if you talk, it's going to be used against you, and it ought to say, and even things you don't say will be used against you, because the more you talk, the more they will make stuff up that you didn't say. I mean, it is human nature, I mean, police aren't evil inherently, you know, most of them, but all of us tend to hear what we want to hear, and all of us tend to regurgitate what we think we heard the way we want it to have been heard. And many police officers who are basically honest will still claim that you made various incriminating admissions, the more you talk, the more of them they're going to, going to remember you make it, and there's just no percentage in it, don't talk to the police. Well, and then the third random warning is you have the right to a lawyer. Well, that kind of seems stupid to ask for a lawyer, because as you may know, police are not going to bring you a lawyer just because you say you want a lawyer. They're not going to bring a lawyer out there to the roadside on a cold, dark, lonely night, they're not going to bring a lawyer to the jail cell, or wherever it is you happen to encounter these police officers. So why would you ask for a lawyer? Well, because every police officer in America knows that he or she is supposed to stop asking you questions when you say you want a lawyer. When you say you want a lawyer, that means stop asking me questions. And, and that's all you should say to a police officer who is suspecting you of violating the law, is I want a lawyer. And I guarantee you that's what they do. I have had the privilege, I guess, of representing several police officers over the years, and at least, when it's a cop who's being suspected of breaking the law, they shut the fuck up, you know, hey, no.
That's what I wanted to hear.
And you do either, so that's the most important, that's the most important thing. But a couple of corollaries that I think are important is that your garbage is fair game, don't put anything out in the garbage that you wouldn't want a judge and prosecutor and a cop to find there, you know, don't put, and I mean things that are legal, let's suggest illegality, you know, a high-time subscription card, a empty pack of zigzag papers, you know, baggies with maybe the corners cut off or not, but I mean, you know, things that aren't in and of themselves illegal, but they will certainly help to persuade a judge to issue a search warrant for your home. Police don't need a search warrant to ransack your trash, they can go through your trash once you've set it out to be picked up, they can go through it with a fine-tooth comb, they can put a dog on it, you know, I mean, don't put ashes in there, don't put roaches in there, don't put anything in there that a dog might actually react to. Use the garbage can down at the quick shop, or the, you know, the gas station, or, or the toilet, or the garbage disposal, but don't put something that suggests illegal activity into your trash, yes.
Now, is that only once you put it out on the curb, not when it's still on your property?
That's the way it's supposed to be, it may still be on your property, but if it's out to be picked up, it's abandoned, this is here.
But if it's up against your house?
When they got me, it was out, it was out at the street when they got me.
I know, and, 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 right, so don't even put it in there, is my advice. Legally, yeah, legally, it's not supposed to be fair game until it's out to be picked up. And the final point I would like to make regarding the rights, is if you encounter a sign on the roadway that says drug checkpoint ahead, usually a little temporary sign, like a little orange, you know, diamond-shaped sign, instead of, instead of right lane closed, it says drug checkpoint ahead, and then you'll usually see a second that'll say drug-sniffing dog on duty, and then you will see an exit, you know, like the gates of heaven have opened up, my God, there's an exit there, thank goodness I can just skip this drug checkpoint by just taking that exit, you know, what fools these cops are. And well, they're not that stupid, you know, the drug checkpoint is at the exit, and you will encounter it if you take that exit. So I don't care how bad you need to go to the bathroom, I don't care if your grandma's dying down that road, don't take that exit. There's no excuse you can give them that would justify in their mind, you're taking that exit. And if you take that exit, you will be stopped, and you will be searched, and be harassed, and just don't take the exit, you'll never see that drug checkpoint, it's not ahead, it's at the next exit. So I am happy to do whatever Trish wants to do now. Thank you.
He was definitely worth waiting for, right?